2018, and I will call this meeting of the Missoula Consolidated Planning Board to order, and begin with a roll call.
Helen Jenkins?
Here.
Helen Jenkins is here. Andy Medford?
Here.
Andy Medford is here. Niva Hassenan?
Here.
Niva Hassenan is here. Michael Houlihan? Michael Houlihan is absent. Dudley Imprada?
Here.
Dudley Imprada is here. Jason Rice? Jason Rice is absent. Jamie Hoffman?
Here.
Jamie Hoffman is here. Stephanie Potts? Stephanie Potts is absent. Vince Caristo?
Here.
Vince Caristo is here. Peter Benson?
Here.
Peter Benson is here. John Newman?
Here.
John Newman is here. And we do have six regular members present, and we only have members of the county absent tonight. So Chair, would you like to appoint Peter Benson as a voting member this evening?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, move on to approval of the minutes for the March 6, 2018, meeting. I didn't see anything in particular that...
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion from Dudley. Do we have a second? Second in from Jamie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the minutes pass. Public comment on items not on tonight's agenda. I see some folks in the crowd here tonight. Does anyone have a comment on something that isn't going to be covered later in the meeting this evening? Okay, seeing none, move on to staff comments. Any comments from staff? Okay, seeing none there. We'll move on to public hearings, the first of which is a rezone at 2203 South 12th Street West. That's a rezone from, proposed rezone from RM 2.7 to RM 2, city item presented by Jenny Baker.
My name is Jenny Baker. I'm with Development Services, and tonight I am presenting a request from Aaron Hanks of Gavin Hanks Architects, on behalf of property owners William and Barbara Biggs and Jeffrey Koch, all of whom are here this evening, to rezone property at 2201 to 2211 South 12th Street West, from the existing RM 2.7 residential multi-dwelling zoning district to RM 2 residential, also a multi-zoning, multi-dwelling zoning district. This rezoning will result in a standard zoning district that, under Title 20, cannot be conditioned. This is the location of the property. It's at the corner of 12th and Schilling. It's part of City Council Ward 6 and the Franklin to the Fort Neighborhood Council. This is a closer view of the location, which is three lots considered as one zoning parcel. It is 43,360 square feet, so just under an acre. There are currently four multi-dwelling buildings with four units apiece in them, for a total of 16 dwelling units. This is the maximum development permitted under the current zoning. When we look at the land use, the applicable regional plan is the Our Missoula City Growth Policy, and it recommends a land use designation in this area, for a considerable stretch around this area, of residential high, and that recommends a density of greater than 24 dwelling units per acre. The city zoning districts that most closely align with this density recommendation are RM 1-45, RM 1-35, RM 1.5, and RM .5. All of those are multi-dwelling districts. The applicant is requesting a rezoning to RM 2 residential, which allows 21 dwelling units per acre. This is greater than the current RM 2.7 zoning that allows 16 dwelling units per acre, but significantly below that density recommended by the growth policy. Areas designated as residential high are close to the core of the community where city services and infrastructure already exist. Little more on that. The growth policy supports a focused inward approach, which means encouraging denser development in areas that have existing infrastructure, proximity to services, and a central location close to the core. This image shows you that, sorry, the location is right in between two bus routes. There are sidewalks here. It already has access to water and sewer, and it's pretty close to a bike path over here. By 14th Street is the Bitterroot Trail. So this location meets all of the growth criteria policy for infill development. This slide shows the current zoning of the area, of the parcel and the surrounding area. So you can see that all of this, which is sort of brownish here, is RM 2.7. Over here, a little further, this is RM 1-45, so that's a multi-zoning district. Up here is a small area of RT 5.4. During our conference call today, Mr. Newman had asked to know what this PUD, the Eaton Street PUD, what density it permits. That parcel's about 2.35 acres, and there are 37 condominium units on it, so that comes out to about 15 units per acre. This was built in the county in 1996 and was probably more in line with the previous growth policy recommendation for density in the area at that time. This table compares the standards between the current zoning for the parcel, the RM 2.7, and the requested zoning for the parcel, the RM 2. You can see from the top three that the building types, the minimum parcel area, and the setbacks for both of these districts are the same. The area per unit, the height, and the units per acre are different. In RM 2.7, the minimum area per unit is 2,700 square feet. In RM 2, that's slightly smaller, at 2,000 square feet per unit. In RM 2.7, the maximum height is 30 feet with a steep roof pitch of 8 over 12. It can go up to 35. RM 2 permits 45 feet in height. The units per acre in RM 2.7 are 16. That's the number that has been built out on the properties we're talking about. RM 2 would allow 21. The RM 2 designation with 21 units per acre would permit the applicant to add a proposed new five-unit building on their property. I'd like to talk about the activity area. So this is where the proposed new building would be built, on the southeast corner. But multi-dwelling developments require an activity area, and in this instance, where that is proposed are these two boxes at the top, so here and here. It's hard to tell, this is gray, this is green. The architect, Aaron Hanks, worked with both Development Services and Parks and Recreation to create an approved proposal for how this activity area requirement can be met with these two sections here at the top, plus inclusion of private outdoor spaces for each unit, which include patios and decks. This plan has been reviewed and approved by Parks as a viable means of meeting the activity area requirement with the addition of the new building on the parcel. In looking at the zoning amendment review criteria, these are the ones to consider. The first is whether the proposal complies with the growth policy. The second is considering public services and transportation, whether development facilitates the provision of motorized and active transportation facilities and other public infrastructure, like sewer and water, whether this promotes compatible urban growth, if it promotes the public health and safety, and whether it considers the character of the district and the suitability of proposed uses. In this instance, the proposed rezone complies with the goals and objectives of the growth policy and comes closer to accomplishing the land use designation in this area of residential high density with greater than 24 dwelling units per acre. The rezoning promotes compatible urban growth because it better implements the growth policy, which encourages greater density in areas close to the core, such as this one. The rezone proposes development that is compatible with the existing urban pattern in this area. It is residential, as are all of the parcels that surround it. And the rezone accords with the promotion of public health and safety by being in an area where there are existing public services, including police, fire, and emergency services. There is access to water and sewer, proximity to schools and parks, as well as Missoula's trail system, public transportation, and other amenities. As a result, our recommendation, excuse me, as a result, the staff recommendation for this request is approval of the request to rezone 2201 to 2211 South 12th Street West, from RM 2.7 to RM 2, based on the findings of fact in the staff report. That's my presentation. I am happy to answer any questions you have. I will through the owners.
Thank you, Jenny. Would the applicant or the applicant's representative wish to speak at this time? Sure, if you would just come forward and sit near the microphone and state your name for the record. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Aaron Hanks with Gavin Hanks Architects. I prepared the application on behalf of the developer and the applicant, Barb and Will Biggs. I don't have a lot to add to this. I just wanted to make myself available for questions. I think Jenny's done a good job at portraying what our request is. We're not asking for anything other than an appropriate zoning designation that allows us the density to develop one additional building on the property. So the owners of the property are here, and I think there were some public comment that they may choose to address, or have questions for them. So I'm available if there are questions about the design or what we're proposing to do.
Thank you. Would the owners, applicants, wish to speak at this time, or certainly not obligated to?
None wish to have questions for us?
Okay, thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and open it up to questions and comments from the planning board. Jamie?
Looking at the site development plan prepared by Gavin Hanks, the setback, preliminary setback off of Schilling is stated to be five feet. It should be 10 feet.
You are correct, it should be 10 feet.
Additional comments? Niva?
Is David Gray here? I was curious about the comments that Mr. Gray submitted, and I think so. Oh, it's going the wrong direction. Sorry. I was just curious about these comments that Mr. Gray submitted and the kinds of assurances he wants to see, and I didn't know whether that's something that we can even do as part of this request for rezoning.
But I talked to Mr. Gray, and I can talk a little bit about the comments. This can't be conditioned, and so there is nothing in your decision that can sort of reference those comments. However, they have been forwarded to the owners, and they can choose to engage with him about clearance of the alley, about the landscaping, but as part of your decision this evening, the zoning district can't be conditioned.
Niva?
Jenny, in general, if we're looking at a situation like this, where we're going to have one or several parcels zoned in a different density than everything else around it, what should we be concerned about? Anything?
The primary criteria that we look at is whether it complies with the growth policy, and since the growth policy allows much more density here, that's one of the main considerations that we look at in recommending approval. The other ones, of course, are the things that we were looking at here, whether it meets the infill, is there transportation, are there services, but the growth policy is the primary thing.
Right. So, yeah, this clearly kind of fits within that, and so this rezoning request is an attempt to catch up, in a way, with the growth policy. We have talked on the planning board about our interest in seeing zoning applied more at a larger level than on every single rezone and site-specific. So I just wanted some clarity on that, and to be sure, I mean, I realize that this is one, this is spot zoning again, right? And I'm hoping that the city will be engaged in a larger rezoning project that will update the areas around the growth policy. Thanks.
Niva, I appreciate that comment, because, I mean, more so than some of the recent rezoning requests, this one sort of struck me, I don't want to say it's borderline, because I don't think it's a borderline spot zone. I mean, I was looking at, you know, kind of one of the seminal cases from the Montana Supreme Court about the factors that a governing body is supposed to consider to determine whether, or a court is supposed to look at to determine whether a zoning change is kind of in the nature of spot zoning. And, I mean, one of the factors is, you know, how the zone fits in with the sort of continuum of zoning districts in that particular area. Another factor is whether the rezoning is in the nature of special legislation that tends to benefit one party. And then courts will also look at the public benefit to that zoning change. And, I mean, you know, as we say over and over again, we're not supposed to consider what the project, the project that's supposed to come to this property is, but we know that the purpose of this rezoning is so that a particular landowner can build a particular extra building to rent additional units to people, which in some ways is kind of, you know, that's a benefit conferred on one party. So anyway, I mean, we talked in our pre-meeting today over the phone about whether, you know, if this particular parcel was closer to the edge between RM 1-45 and RM 2.7, if it would sort of, you know, build the continuum out, as opposed to, you know, RM 1.1-45, RM 2.7, and then sort of a leapfrog 2.0 in the middle of the RM 2.7? But I just appreciate that you brought that up, because that was the only thing that stuck out to me, was this is kind of getting there. You know, if there was a, I think, a bigger discrepancy between this requested zoning designation and the surrounding zoning, like they want to go to C2-4 or something right here, then it would obviously really be a problem, and I doubt we would see the recommendation to approve it. But I just appreciate that that's where your mind went, because that's kind of where mine went to, and, you know, starting to go down that path, maybe. Anyway, other comments? Helen?
So I'm in support of this proposal, but I would just appeal to the owners to continue to work with neighbors, including Mr. Gray. I understand that there's kind of some historical baggage around previous ownership and other things, but, you know, we're seeing a lot of changes in this particular area of Missoula, and so it just is, it's going to work better if people work together to solve these kind of day-to-day issues. So I would just appeal to the owners. Thank you.
I second that. Andy?
I'm sorry, maybe I just didn't hear Jamie's comment, but what was the comment about the setbacks? I guess I was a little confused at the setback.
12th, 12th street's the primary street, so that's the primary front yard, and that's 20, which requires in this zone a 20-foot front yard setback. The primary street is that street, which is parallel to the alley. The side street is the other street, and the side street setback is 10 feet. On the site development plan, it says it's 5 feet, which is incorrect.
So what is the front? It's 12th?
The front for this parcel is 12th Street.
So what's the rear?
The rear would be the alley.
Because it looks like this 2209 setback, 20 feet from rear, and it looks like this proposed five blocks, and it's not.
We have two street frontages, so the other two frontages are, the other two setbacks are side yard setbacks.
So it's got a front and two sides?
Yes, two fronts and two sides.
This is a front along 12th Street, and the setback for that is 20 feet. Along Schilling, it's a street side setback, so the minimum setback for the building that would occupy this is 10 feet. From the rear, which is the alley, the setback is also 20 feet. You can tell that this building is in about that far. There's a parking space, which would be about 10 feet, and then this island. So this is 20 feet in from the alley, and these lines might be slightly shifted. Over here, there would have to be a 5-foot setback from the property line.
I guess I'm confused.
I don't think that's correct, the setback off. If you have two front yards, the remaining setbacks have to be side yards.
Why would there be two front yards?
Pardon?
Why would there be two front yards? The front is along 12th.
Well, there are two street side, there are two street frontages.
That's correct, and this one is the street side. So because it's one parcel, this would not count as a front on Schilling. Is that why you think it would be greater?
You know, my recollection of zoning regulations is getting more stale by the day. That was, you know, back when. If you had two street side frontages, two street frontages, the other two had to be side yard setbacks.
I wish it...
It used to be.
It's probably neither here nor there ultimately, but I wish we had that diagram. There's the diagram.
Yes, in the zoning book, yeah. That's what one would refer to.
But again...
Do you want me to try to bring it up?
Pardon?
Do you want me to try to bring it up?
Well, I do. I would not wish to see this applicant to suffer from a later determination that the new building is encroaching on any setback.
So the new building will be required to meet all current zoning standards when it comes in for building permits?
Yes.
And the existing buildings met the standards that were enforced at the time they were built.
Yes. Aaron, what do you think?
I agree with Jenny for sure, and I'm familiar with the diagram she's referring to. I don't know how quickly we can bring it up. If we have an error on our site development plan, it's a preliminary site development plan. We don't even have a building shown on it yet. We just have an area indicated. So we'd obviously confirm that and make sure that's approved before any building gets laid upon the, on the site plan. So I appreciate you pointing that out, though we certainly want that to be correct, so we'll make sure that's true.
Sure. Okay.
And again, I feel it's incumbent upon me to stress that it just doesn't matter for our consideration here today, but in the interest of answering a question. Okay, so it's that left, bottom left, right? Yeah, so it's a street side.
When you are looking at this one, this would sort of be turned upside down. So this is 12th Street, where you see the front. This is Schilling, which is the street side. I stand corrected on the rear, because it does show that it would be a side, and then this would be another side. So your recollection of the zoning was better than mine.
Way to go, internet.
Way to go, Jamie Hoffman. Sorry for the error.
Vince?
Thanks. I'm going to support this request. I think it makes a lot of sense, the type of infill development that I think is going to move us in the right direction for housing affordability and other things. I have a comment on parking, and I guess I'll start with a question. Jenny, does, so this is a corner lot, right? And I just measured here, and there's 300, about 320 feet of street frontage on 12th Street, and about 130 feet of street frontage on Schilling. Does that ever, does the availability of street parking ever play into the parking requirement for private development?
It does not. We base the parking on what Title 20 requires, and in this instance, because each of these units, the existing units, are less than 850 square feet, 16 spaces are required, 26 are provided in the lot, which gives a lot of extra. The units proposed will be three below 850 and two that are above, so that requires five more spaces. So 21 spaces altogether will be required in that lot for the development. There are 26, and we don't really consider street parking if they meet those requirements.
And if a proposal has more parking spaces than is required than required by the zoning code, that's not seen as non-conforming, or doesn't require variance?
It does not. This is existing, and so in particular, they just happen to have more spaces than they needed.
I bring that up because I know a lot of communities have parking maximums, where they actually restrict the maximum number of parking spaces that a development can have. If you think about it, you know, in a lot of ways, it helps support other community goals, for encouraging people to walk, or bike, or take the bus. In this case, and, you know, I think of, reminded of an article in the Missoulaian this week about a development in East Missoula, a tiny house development, sort of centered on parking, you know, sort of exploring the way in which the regulations, I guess it was in the county, I wasn't quite sure, the parking regulations for every house restricted the developer's ability to build higher density. It's not quite the situation here, but we're still dealing with this issue of regulations require potentially more parking than is necessary or helpful, or helpful. And we have two data points, really, and I know, I guess I should start with this. I know there were a few comments from, the comment from Sam and your niece, Ms. Bee, mentioned parking problems and the concern about needing to have adequate number of off-street parking for new development. That may be true. It seems like from reading David Gray's comment, and from looking at the aerial photograph that we were provided, as well as the aerial photograph of the property that's on Google, I think there's some indications that there's more than enough parking already. The fact that parking, as David said, the parking lot is currently being used as a vehicle maintenance area by tenants, and allowing in-vehicle habitation, says to me that the neighbors don't really have a problem with someone using one of the parking spaces for a really, really long time. If you look at the aerial photograph that was in our packet, there are four cars in the parking lot, and zero cars on the entire, on either of the two street frontages. On Google Maps, there are, the aerial photograph, which is presumably from another time, there are 11 cars in the 26-car parking lot, and one car on the entire 400-plus street frontage. So unrelated to the rezoning request, but the details they provided sort of spurred that comment, so thanks.
Additional comments on this one? Okay, seeing none, we'll entertain a motion at this time, if anyone is so inclined.
I'll make a motion to approve the request for zone lots 1 through 12 of Block 83 in the Caroline Edition, Section 29 Township, 13 North Range, 19 West, from RM 2.7 residential multi-dwelling to RM 2 residential multi-dwelling.
Motion from Dudley. Do we have a second? Seconded by Helen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, seeing none, the motion passes. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate the info and the work on the presentation, Jenny.
Thank you.
Okay, item number two, another city rezone at 3720 North Reserve Street and 3050 Stockyard Road. This is a C2-4 and M1-2 to C2-4. Again, a city rezone presented by Anita MacIntyre.
Good evening, everyone. Anita MacIntyre with Development Services. This is a request from Western Hospitality Group and Laxman Group to rezon properties addressed at 3720 North Reserve and 3050 Stockyard Road, from C2-4 and M1-2, which is split zoned, to C2-4. And this rezoning will result in a standard zoning district under Title 20, which cannot be conditioned. The properties are located east of North Reserve Street, between Howard Gray Drive to the north and Stockyard Road to the south. Properties include Hilton Barton Inn on the north and former Hooters Restaurant on the south. The surrounding area is developed with a mix of commercial and industrial uses. The applicable regional plan is the Our Missoula City Growth Policy 2035, which recommends two land use designations. The first is regional commercial and services, and the second... second is mixed, community mixed use. Regional commercial and services intended to support a multi-county region as a hub for retail, education, health services, public administration, outdoor recreation activities, while the community mixed use designation is described as high intensity commercial, serving the general community needs and high density residential. These land use designations accommodate uses with special or expensive land use needs and impacts encompasses, it encompasses uses with large land requirements, uses which involve outdoor storage, storage of merchandise, automobile uses, regional retail uses, and support services for business, industry, and highway travel. So this is the zoning map for the area. Properties to the north, across Howard Razor are Zone M12 Limited Industrial. Properties to the south of Stockyard are Zone C24, Community Commercial, and North Reserve Business Center. And while it doesn't show on this map yet, because this, when I made this map, our map had not been updated, but as you may remember, two months ago, this property here, the old Chicago Pizza, was also rezoned to C24. So I just wanted to point that out, and I'm sure you probably remember that. So properties to the east and to west, across Reserve Street, are also zoned M12 Limited Industrial. So this area is part of a new urban renewal district, as you can see on the slide here. In November 2016, the MRA, the Missoula Redevelopment Development Agency Board, approved the North Reserve Scott Street Master Plan, and the intent of this plan is to provide guidance for developments occurring in the North Reserve Scott Street Urban Renewal District area. And this is one of the largest undeveloped areas in the Missoula urbanized area, if you're familiar with this part of town. So specifically in this plan, the vision for this plan shows this area as within the Reserve Street District and Cardor Retail, which are intended to create a regional business designation and to attract a commercial office So as I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, the property is currently split zoned. So western portions of the subject properties are zoned C24, with the eastern portion zoned, zoned M12. The M12 Limited Industrial District is not listed as a relatable district for either the regional commercial and services or the community mixed use land use designations of the growth policy. During review of the proposed boundary line relocation for the property, staff discovered the split zoning. So per Title 20, Section 20, 0.1100, split zoning of properties is prohibited. So that's why you received this application. So to just briefly talk about the proposed zoning of the property of C24, it is a relatable district for areas with the regional commercial and services land use designation. The rezone of the subject property to C24 Community Commercial accommodates a greater variety of commercial uses, promoting compatible urban growth that are in compliance with the regional commercial and services and community mixed use land and land use designations in the growth policy. And the C24 district is a standard district under Title 20, with standard permitted and conditional uses. So in reviewing zoning amendments, we do have five criteria on the slide here. These applications need to demonstrate that they're in accordance with the growth policy, that they facilitate provision of motorized and active transportation facilities and other public infrastructure like water and sewer, that they promote compatible urban growth, promote public health and safety, and consider the character of the district. So the proposed rezone complies with the goals and objectives of the growth policy, as C24 is listed as a relatable zoning district with the regional commercial and services and community mixed use land use designations. And the rezoning is in an area with improved infrastructure along both Howard Razor Drive and Stockyard Road. Both are improved with sidewalks and shared by planes. Stockyard Road adjacent to 35, 3050 Stockyard Boulevard has, Boulevard sidewalks, and Howard Razor has curb-side sidewalk. Both sites have access to motorized and non-motorized transportation, and are also served by public transit. And the properties are also served by city water and sewer. The rezoning proposes development that is compatible with the existing uses in this area, as both sites are already developed with uses that are found in the C24 zoning district matrix and are compatible with the land use designation. This accords with promotion of public health, safety, and welfare by being in an area with existing inadequate public services, including police, fire, emergency services, and access to city water and sewer. And the rezoning gives reasonable consideration to the character of the district and uses on surrounding lands. So our recommendation this evening, staff recommend approval of the request to rezonate Missoula Hilton Lot 1 and Razor Commercial Tracks Number 1, Track E2-1, a certificate of survey 5958, remainder of Lot 1A to C24, all in Section 8, Township 13 North, Range 19 West, from C24 Community Commercial and M12 Limited Industrial to C24 Community Commercial, based on the findings of fact in the staff report. So I am available for any questions that you may have, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Anita. Would the applicant or the applicant's representative wish to speak at this time, if present? Okay, seeing none. Do you have any public comment on this item? I don't know that we have any public really here. Okay, seeing no comment, we will close public hearing and open up to questions from planning board members. Anybody? Vince?
It's been a while since we've seen a split zoning case, but could you, could you, if you know, if you can, can you explain how this happened? How the split zoning came to be?
Well, it looks like over, there were a series of certificates of survey, and subdivision exemptions, and properties that were bought and sold over a period of about 10 or 20 years. And when the property was zoned, it was zoned C-I-I, and I1 or I2 under Title 19. When Title 20 was adopted, those were automatically given the zones that you see on the map now. And I don't believe that it was caught by anyone until just recently, when the applicants came in with a boundary line relocation, and that's when it was noticed that the properties were already split zoned, and the boundary line relocation was a good time to be able to address both correcting that and notifying the applicant that the property actually was split zoned, so it was a way to kind of fix a couple things in, you know, in short order. So I don't know if that exactly answers your question. It's kind of hard to tell. It was like a series of various boundary line relocations and things over time, and the parcel where the, the former Hooters Restaurant is, is actually a part of a remainder for an old certificate of survey. So this is a good time to kind of address some of these things and get them cleaned up, and they're here to kind of help us with that as well.
So this was instigated from a request from the property owner to adjust some boundary lines?
Correct, yeah.
Could the property owner do anything with the property? Get a building permit with a split zone existing, or?
Well, it depends. If the, I mean, in the perfect world, they would rezon the property, but it's kind of hard to have them do that unless they're doing something with the property. If they were, perhaps, the development that was being proposed was something that was consistent with each of those zones, and there was no encroachment of buildings or whatever that were in separate zones, it may have been allowed, but in the, the perfect world, exactly what's happening now is happening, that they are coming forward to rezon the property in addition to cleaning up the boundary lines.
And my last question is sort of related to things we've talked about, you know, looking at zoning on a wider basis. Is it, is it technically possible, do you think, to identify all properties in the city that are currently split zoned?
Um, I'm sure there probably is some sort of GIS analysis that could be done to do that. I don't think there's a lot, because generally, unless, you know, folks know that they're split zoned, I mean, some of them may not really understand all of that, but when we look at maps, whether we're looking at specific proposals, or we just happen to see things on the map, sometimes we'll see things that are split zoned, but it's, I'd say it's very, it's not very common at all. It's, it's a pretty rare thing. And I think in this case, it was just, you know, as I mentioned, there were a number of things that happened where the property boundaries changed through, you know, various deeds and certificates of survey and things like that. So this is kind of an unusual case. Thank you.
Just a quick follow-up in line of events. Was it, so is there a fee charged for this rezoning?
Yes, there was.
Okay.
Because it was applicant initiated, yes.
Okay, it was. So, I mean, is the boundary line relocation in any way conditioned on the split zoning being resolved? I mean, how, was this required that they, that they do this and pay the fee?
Yeah, they did have to do this in order to go forward with the boundary line relocation, because the boundary line relocation basically would have exacerbated the situation, and we couldn't create parcels. I mean, the city knowingly saw that parcels were split zoned and allowed a boundary line relocation that, you know, either perpetuated the situation or made it worse. I mean, that would be, you know, something on our part that, you know, that wouldn't be good for the city to be doing that. And thankfully, the, the applicants were willing and able to come forward and actually rezon the property and to address that. Because in the real world, C24 zone is much more in line with how the property is currently developed, and any, you know, proposals in the future likely would be for commercial-type uses versus industrial uses.
Did the, and this is probably illustrated in a diagram, so I apologize for not knowing myself, but did the current parcel boundaries comport with the boundaries between the two zoning districts, such that the boundary line relocation does create the split, or are they, is it already split?
It's already split, actually, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I have one question.
Yes?
The property that's west of the plots that we were looking at, are they also Hilton-owned?
These ones?
Lot 2, Missoula Hilton, Track 1B. Do you know anything about those? I guess I'm just curious.
I don't know that there's anything proposed, like any changes on those, if that's what you're asking. The one at the corner here, where the cursor is, recently, there was a Panda Express, and there's also a little strip center, like I think it's going to be a three or four-unit strip center that's going to be constructed adjacent to that. So that is something that you'll probably be seeing built shortly.
Okay.
I don't know if that addresses your question or not.
Yeah, I guess I'm curious if we're going to see more in this area. Okay.
There has been quite a bit of development in this section of Reserve over the last couple of years.
Yeah, I guess my question is more for reference and context for the whole board, but this, and John just kind of pulled up the city-county boundary map, and I'm looking at the vicinity map provided by the applicant here. And so Anita, can you speak a little bit to kind of the troubling mosaic of city-county ownership in this area? Because, you know, we've already seen another, you know, kind of rezon request for this area. I'm sure we'll get others, but then we have kind of the added challenge of the fact that we are also dealing with county zoning in this area. Can you speak to that a little bit? Please?
What we do have, we do have in the growth policy areas that are within the wastewater service area, basically boundary, are the areas that are planned for in the growth policy, so there are land use designations assigned to them. So should some of those properties come in for annexation, they would likely be assigned land uses that are consistent with the growth policy, consistent with what's occurring on surrounding properties. We haven't actually seen any, like, in my recollection recently, of anyone who's wanted to come in to annex some of those properties. That being said, it does seem like the annexations are starting to tick up a bit more, so it's likely that we'll, we will be seeing some of them come in, and if they do, we'll be looking at the land use map to see what it recommends, looking at what the surrounding properties are developed as, and kind of, you know, make our decisions based on some of those things, and also based on, you know, what the applicants are considering as well, and how that fits in with our regulations and whatnot. I was going to bring up a map here.
Any other comments or questions on this one?
It would be helpful to see the map.
Or is that in our packet? The counter?
We'll take a moment for this pop-up here button. that we were just talking about. So, you know, there are a few county properties still in this area, and some of them are already developed with, you know, industrial uses, so it's hard to say, you know, when we'll see those come in, but if any of them do, again, we'll be looking at the growth policy and other regulations to determine if a proposal is something that's in line with those.
Is, is everything within that Scott Street master plan in the city? Or does it have city zoning?
There's probably a few parcels that are not in the city, actually. I believe, like, some of those ones that we were just looking at on the map here, like this one that's adjacent to the Hilton, you can see here, and then some of these parcels over here. This is the consumer direct site here, and this is consumer direct way. So when you flip back, let me see if I can get it better. So some of those parcels are probably right through here. It looks like they're kind of shown as transitional commercial and office and things such as that. So, you know, this is one of the, one of the plans that we'll take a look at, because we have, in addition to our regional plans, like the, the growth policy, so we have vicinity plans and URD plans and things like this, too, that will, you know, all of these pieces and parts will come together for, you know, how we review projects that come in.
So I don't know if I'm allowed to ask this, but so given the fact that the city's already invested all this time and money into a beautiful master plan for this area, is owner-initiated annexation the only option?
I don't believe that this, the city has any plans to forcibly annex properties, if that's the question. That being said, the majority of, you know, the annexations that we see are always, like you said, they're, they want the owners to initiate them, and they come in, because normally, they can increase their development potential on the property by being in the city. You know, we have more density, you know, when you connect water and sewer, they give you a lot more options of, you know, how you can develop. So it looks like our director is here, maybe he wants to, you know.
Thanks, if I could, my Keynes Development Services Director. So the, to answer your question, it is a mix of city and county property, as you look at the URD boundary there. The city is looking at annexation strategy right now to try to have a sort of holistic, strategic look at annexations, where we should annex, and areas that don't make sense to annex. There are some, annexation is based on state law, and there are a few opportunities that you saw on that map, there were properties wholly surrounded by the city, then we do, at least technically, have the ability to go in and annex that property. But, you know, generally, we try to work with property owners, and as you quite rightly say, typically, these are applicant-initiated, and we certainly, unless it's these are applicant-initiated. And we certainly, unless it's wholly surrounded, we do not have the authority, even though it would, it would really help to resolve some of those boundaries and kind of clear things up, that would be ideal. But it's not, it's outside of our authority if, you know, just to go in and annex a number of properties without the owner's consent.
Do you think that the, are some of the industrial uses in that area incentivized to remain in the county?
Well, there is, if they're not going to do development, there's not really any incentive to be in the city. And that's, you know, usually if someone, you know, especially a large industrial property owner, they have what they have, they don't intend to, you know, do any kind of a major expansion or redevelopment, then they are really not, there's really no incentive to be in the city, at least. You know, we remind them that we have, you know, city services, fire service, particularly in an area like this is, is critical. But, you know, like every property owner is going to look at the benefits and look at the costs and figure out if it makes sense for them to remain in the county or to ask to be annexed. And if they ask to be annexed, then we will be happy to do that.
Are the properties that are actually part of the county, are they in the urban renewal district or not?
Yes, they're in the urban renewal district.
So they're, and they could contribute, their taxable increment funds would go into that district?
Well, if they, there's only increment if new development occurs. And new development would likely only occur if they annex into the city. So it's kind of a chicken and an egg kind of a thing. You know, there is no, when you, when, in a new URD, there is no increment until development starts to occur.
Would if property values increased?
Well.
Does that not go?
It will, that will increase the increment, but, I mean, generally, those are really minimal changes, if at all. I mean, with the way, you know, some properties are, the values are, or the, the values are increasing, some are decreasing. It's really kind of random across the board. It's not, I'm not the expert on urban renewal districts, but I know there are years when, even years where development occurs, but at the end of the year, the taxable value somehow is less than it was the previous year. So it depends on a lot of things that Department of Revenue is doing in their wisdom.
Thanks. Additional comments or questions? Jamie?
It is, it is my recollection that the fee for a rezoning application for a parcel larger than an acre is 5,000 bucks. So it cost this applicant that much to fix this problem.
Yeah, those, all of our planning fees are set at half of what it costs to process the application. So I, it's not a money-making proposition. I'll just say that for the record.
Additional comments or questions?
Motion.
Sure, sounds good.
I move that we approve the adoption of an ordinance to rezone Missoula Hilton Lot 1 and Razor Commercial Tracks Number 1, Track E2-1 of Certificate of Survey 5958, remainder of Lot 1A from C2-4 Community Commercial and M1-2 Limited Industrial to C2-4 Community Commercial, based on the findings of fact in the staff report.
Motion from Niva, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Helen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, scene, no, the motion passes. Thanks, everybody. Thanks for answering semi-affield questions. But these things raise all sorts of issues, and it's great to have the experts here to answer those questions, so we appreciate it.
Our next item on the agenda is the Design Excellence, so I'm expecting them to be...
Oh, here they are!
Right.
Right on the field.
So Communication and Special Presentation. As Anita said, this is the City of Missoula Design Excellence Project, and presenting is Laval Means and the folks from Winter &amp; Company. Oh, thanks.
While we're getting set up, can you hear me? Is that?
Yep, perfect.
I'm Laval Means with the Planning Section for Development Services for the City of Missoula, and I want to thank you for having us here. We're going to give you a special presentation, give you background and an overview of where we're at on the Missoula Design Excellence Project right now. This is a project that we started about a year, a little over a year ago, that the city council asked us, where the city council asked us to look at establishing some form of character management tools that have to do with focusing in on our commercial corridors in the downtown and looking at ways that we can help to address and speak to the quality of development, private property development that occurs in those areas, and, and how they might better relate to and preserve the character of our community. So we've been in this process for quite a while, have had, you know, a broader conversation with the community and then narrowing it down to the point that we are now presenting and talking to the community about the particular design tools that have been developed. When we started this process, we contracted with Winter &amp; Company, and they are here in town today. We had a workshop earlier this afternoon and a couple other work sessions that are going on over the course of these few days. And we wanted to bring the project to you all to get the background again and an opportunity to see what's coming, what we're looking at, because eventually, this will likely be something you're looking at as, in the form of ordinance for the code. I have also, so I'm just going to introduce the team that we have here today and then hand it over to the team. You have Norrie Winter with Winter &amp; Company and Brad Johnson with Winter &amp; Company, and he's been the project manager for the project. Lee Einsweiler with Code Studio, who is a consultant with Winter &amp; Company on this project. And now I think I'll just pass it back to Brad, and he will give you the presentation, and I hope we have time for some questions. What I also handed out to you is just a portion of the material that is on the website, it's the executive summary and the Reader's Guide. And it says right in there, this is really key to read and read all the way through because it really helps set up the project and tells you about what we still have to kind of work out. So we're definitely in process still. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a little bit more about our team. We're also joined by WGM Group from here in Missoula, Jeremy Keane, who maybe some of you know, I'm sure, has been very involved in the project. We also have a company called Urban Advisors out of Portland, Oregon. That is Ed Starkey, and he's an economist. And he's helping us understand and think about the impacts of any design excellence tools that may be implemented on the cost and feasibility of development. So that's the remainder of the team.
Sir, could I ask you to bring that microphone, kind of that, it kind of looks like a mouse?
Yes.
Yep, totally. And now we were just picking it up for viewers at home.
Sure.
Thanks.
Okay, thanks. So we've had a busy day. We've been meeting with staff. We actually just left a community workshop at the Doubletree where we presented this information. I know a couple of you guys were there, so you've been making rounds around town. And we will be here through tomorrow. We have a stakeholder meeting tomorrow, and then we're going to have another stakeholder meeting later this week. So this is a big milestone in the project and a kind of an unveiling of a draft of some design standards and guidelines. So give you some quick background. So I think the big reason why the city's doing this project is that people care about design here in Missoula. And that's evidenced by their excitement and enthusiasm for some of the great projects and traditional historic buildings that, that they experience here day to day. It's also, the other side of that, is that there are some buildings that have come online, and I think people are concerned about that. People feel could be kind of anywhere USA or don't really meet the values of the community here. So that was kind of some big impetus for the project overall. So just a little bit of housekeeping here. Our focus has been on most, not all, but the majority of the key commercial corridors throughout the city. And in those commercial corridors, really focusing on non-residentially zoned properties. So our zoned properties have not been a focus here. In downtown as well, and that's coterminous with the downtown master plan boundary. Just a little bit of background about these terminology that you'll hear me using tonight. And there's a couple of key tools that communities use to approach and address design excellence. Some of them are design standards, which I think you guys are going to be really familiar with because you're used to seeing them in the zoning ordinance, right? They're prescriptive, they're generally measurable, you meet them or you don't. And they can be administered fairly easily and determined with, whether a certain project is meeting them or not. A design guideline is a little more nuanced, a little more fine-grained, is more focused on the design objective. It's discretionary, more qualitative in nature. And that means that there needs to be a design review process to determine whether a project is meeting a design guideline or not. And that can typically be done at a staff level, or it could be done by a design review board of some kind. The thing about design guidelines to keep in mind is that they're more flexible than zoning generally. They specify a design intent, and then they may offer multiple options for how a given project may meet that design intent. Okay? Just an example, design standard, the building has to be set back five feet. Design guideline, the area between the building and the street should enhance the pedestrian experience. Well, there's lots of ways to do that, right? That's a tougher question to determine whether it's doing it or not. And I've put a couple of examples here that I think are fairly nice pedestrian experiences, but they're quite a bit different in the design. And so guidelines may highlight both of these as options for providing that pedestrian friendly edge. Just to give you a sense of those two terms. Laval mentioned this, I think. This is our third workshop tonight that we've held. We've had good attendance. The first workshop, I think we had almost 100 people showed up at that one, which was very enthusiastic and very work-intensive. And people, people really dove right in. It was really impressive. I don't know, maybe some of you were there. The picture down below is, is one from that workshop. And in there, we heard, kind of at a high level, what people valued in terms of design and what their vision was at a high level for the whole community. They also helped us understand how that vision might change a little bit based on where you are, whether you're in downtown or a certain part of downtown, or one corridor versus another, right? With that input, we put together a strategy report where we came here in December and presented essentially an overview of a structure and an approach to, to addressing design excellence based on that community input. And a big part of that was to identify different contexts within the downtown and highlight what was really key in terms of, of community design on some key factors. And so if you look at this table, you'll see some of those key factors in downtown where the interest at the street level. So the ground floor, the design of the ground floor. Compatibility with traditional character was big in downtown where you have many historic buildings, right? So it lays out a framework and a vision for how to think about downtown, not as just one place, but a few different contexts. And a framework for how ultimately we would come up with design standards and design guidelines that are tailored to these different place types. A similar approach with the corridors, different flavors, it's different design expectations by the community it appeared for these different corridors. And one of the cool things that came out of the community workshop was that there are certain points within corridors, or nodes we call them, that design emphasis maybe is more important. Could be a key gateway to the city or a prominent intersection, maybe. So, based on that strategy and the general, I think, input was that people, people generally thought that we were moving in the right direction based on that strategy. So with that, that reassurance and feedback, we developed the draft design tools that are before you now. And so what we've done is put together what we're calling Design Excellence Overlay. And so this graphic is, is meaning to show that the overlay tools are an overlay to Title 20 zoning. And so within those Design Excellence Overlay tools is a combination of prescriptive design standards, so more similar to zoning, and design guidelines in the Design Excellence Manual. Now they are, these tools will either augment or supersede the requirements in the base zoning code. One thing to mention is that we didn't address land use in these tools. It's a purely focus on design, community design, functionality of the site and things like that. So a little bit more about that. So there's a few documents that come along with this. You could just read the executive summary, and I think in 14 pages or something like that, you can get a pretty good idea of, of what's being proposed. But the actual tools that are before you now and before the community for review are split up into these three different documents. So there's a, two sets of what we're calling Overlay Design Standards, which are those prescriptive design standards for downtown and then also for the commercial corridors. There's also the Design Guidelines Manual, and it includes guidelines, discretionary guidelines, which would be aided by design review for both downtown and the commercial corridors, each in their own little section. So one thing I've been pointing out to people as you look at this graphic is that one of the benefits of the system that we're recommending here is that if you have a project that maybe doesn't meet the zoning requirements or even the overlay design standards to the letter of the standard, you know, let's say you're, the required setback is five feet, or the percentage of glass, that's a better one, percentage of glass on the ground floor of the building requirement is 50%, and you can do an excellent building that creates visual interest at the street level with 45%. You could get what we call alternative compliance via the design review process using the design guidelines. So that's how the prescriptive design standards and the discretionary guidelines sort of work together as a system. So just an example page from the Overlay Design Standards. So see, this is, this is kind of zoning looking, zoning-y looking stuff. There's numbers and minimums and maximums and little diagrams showing measurements and things like that. So that's probably somewhat familiar stuff to you guys. And notice at the top of this table, you'll see those same colors that you saw on that map. So the prescriptive design standards are tailored to the community's vision for these different corridors, or in the case of downtown context. Another example from the corridor is looking at distance between functional entries along a street or minimum glazing requirements on a ground floor. The Design Excellence Manual, just to go a little bit more into that, is broken into four sections. The first part is generally, general introductory material and guiding principles that apply to all development regardless of where you are in Missoula, citywide principles. Then two major sections, one on downtown, one on the corridors, each with an introduction and vision for community design in those respective areas. And then a key section on site design as well as building design. And then And then a signage chapter in part four that applies across the board, although it may have some special information about specific typologies or corridors as well. Example of a site design guideline page here. They're pretty comprehensive. You'll see when you get a chance to look at the design guidelines, cover a lot of topics. These are some of the key topics. So in site design, you know, the placement of the building, how the parking, surface parking area might be designed, where it's located, how it's accessed, things like that. Take into account all the things that we heard from the community, the impact on the public realm, safety, the experience of the pedestrian, et cetera. Building design, some of the topics that you'll see as you peruse the building design chapter in either the downtown or the commercial corridors section. And signs, I mentioned that's one chapter, and that's looking at several aspects of signs, including how the sign is appropriately integrated with the design of the building or the architecture of the building, how a sign is illuminated in a sensitive way, where it's not creating a lot of glare or drawing away from the building itself, the materials that you would use on a sign, addressing buildings that actually become signs. You saw that building I showed as a picture earlier that I think the community kind of feels is a big sign. And that's probably not good. And it's not meeting the signage, sign size guidelines and standards, right? And then some guidelines for specific sign types. So, what does all this mean in terms of what an applicant would need to do if they were a property that was covered by this design excellence overlay? This graphic, or this chart, is a recommendation, that it's all in draft form right now, but how design review would be applied to projects throughout the city based on those maps that you saw. And so, I'll just give you a summary of what this thing is saying. What it's saying is that design review, discretionary design review with design guidelines would be required for all projects in downtown with the design guidelines, as well as corridor typology one. That's the purple one on the map that includes the Brook Street corridor for which there's a master plan, right? As well as the portion of Russell Street that's covered by a master plan. Then as you move into these other corridors, typology two, three, and four, while you'd always be required to meet the standards in those overlay, those prescriptive overlay design standards, which would ultimately become a part of the zoning, you would only need to comply with design guidelines and design review if you met a threshold, a size threshold, which is based on the square footage amount. So if you look in that second, always read the row or column, the second row, you'll see in typology two, what we're saying is that if your building's under 8,000 square feet, you just meet the standards and you don't need to go through design review. If you move over, you'll see that threshold moves up, and that's based on community's expectation for design in these different locations. So type four corridor doesn't kick in until you meet that enterprise commercial threshold that you guys are familiar with at 30,000 square feet. So that's Reserve Street we're talking about. You're going to have to be a pretty big project before you're required to go to design review out there. A couple other points about this one. Projects that are receiving financial assistance from MRA, we're saying would be required to go through the design review process and be consistent with the design guidelines. And that is an incentive in a way. I mentioned the alternative compliance options earlier. So if I'm coming in, my project doesn't meet the threshold, so I don't have to go to design review, but I want to do something different than what the zoning allows, I would need to enter the design review process. So what would all this look like as a preliminary flow and process chart? Well, first of all, if you're not in the overlay, it's business as usual. Your property's not in the overlay, you go through the same process you do now, and it's not impacting you at all. If you are in the overlay, you'd first need to determine which of those contexts or corridor typologies your property is in, looking at those maps. And we ultimately, as this moves forward, will need to define exactly which properties are included in it and are not. General idea for the typologies is that properties that certainly are adjacent and touching the corridor would be included and maybe some others. So that's a technical process that needs to be worked out, and that we would work out before we come back to you for recommendation later in the fall. Now, after you determine your context, you would, you know, you can't see it on the screen at all the way the light is, but that red box says, review your project related to the overlay design standards, those prescriptive design standards, as well as any still applicable base zoning standards that didn't get replaced by the overlay standards. So some of those base standards may still apply from Title 20. Then, if design review is not required, you're off to building permit if you've got approval, right? If it is required, then you would enter a design review process that is indicated by this orange box, which I know is hard to read. What it says is you review your project with the design excellence manual and submit a design review application. That would circulate into review by staff or perhaps a design review board in some cases. And then at that point, you would either be denied approval of your design review application, or you would get approval. If you got approval, you're off to building permit. If you didn't get approval, then you would cycle back through and perhaps revise your project. So, this is a little bit, you still can't see the red, but this is, this is the part of the chart that assumes you are in the design excellence overlay, so a little bit easier to see anyway. So, that's the end of my quick overview. We're here, we're all here to... No, not on this one. Quick overview of the next steps, like I kind of touched on it, but we're taking input through April 3rd on this. People are able to provide input online, we collected it at the workshop, we'll collect it with you here tonight, and then based on that input, we'll tweak these documents. And then ultimately, we'll come back to you, and I think that date is scheduled for maybe September sometime, for your hopefully formal recommendation to City Council to... So, that's the timeframe.
Yep. Yeah. Yeah. There's some technical implementation task, kind of, I mentioned one of them is the mapping, and then how technically it gets inserted and integrated with Title 20.
Okay, well, thanks. I appreciate that. I know we probably have questions, I know Helen has questions, you said?
So many questions.
You want to start us off?
Sure.
Okay.
So thank you guys for being here, I really appreciate it. I guess one of my initial questions is, and maybe this is just like a staff capacity problem or whatnot, but why are we prioritizing the corridors and not requiring design excellence for all corridors?
Why are some corridors left off? Yeah, I think through the community process, those were sort of the ones that rose to the top and were prioritized. It's changed from the beginning to now. There's been a couple that have been added on, and a couple were dropped out. But it's just based on input, and part of it is that, as you've mentioned, it is a big factor is, you know, having the man-hours and ability and time to implement a system like this. So, that's why it's a little bit targeted.
Of course. Thanks for coming. I could add a follow-up question to what Helen asked. I mean, I've been pretty active in the Brook Street group, and I understand the rationale for using corridors. But in that, in that project in particular, it's an area. We've defined a pretty large area. Is it possible, is my question, is, I think you've answered it already, but it's possible to use the standards and guidelines that you've developed and apply them to commercial properties that aren't directly adjacent or directly touching the corridor, right?
I mean, there may be a couple of parts to that. There may be some properties that aren't touching, but are, you know, within, let's say 150 feet. Like, there, there needs to be some parameters for how you define the distance that is in the corridor, right? And so there may be some that actually come into the overlay that aren't necessarily touching the property. In terms of beyond that, I mean, these are certainly tailored, designed to respond to properties that are generally fronting the corridors. So, I think some of the principles could potentially be applied in a separate process down the road, but we'd have to be careful with that, you know?
What percentage of commercial properties do you think are, would be affected by the...
All throughout the city?
Yeah, at the end of the day?
That's a good one. Yeah, we're going to have to run some GIS on that to determine for sure. I don't even want to throw out a ballpark on that one, to be honest with you. I mean, it's a lot of corridors covered, right? It's quite a bit of corridors covered, so it's going to be a good amount, yeah.
I don't know if this is applicable, but is that a taxpayer? How are we going to fund this new level of bureaucracy?
I'm going to let the bureaucrat answer that.
And I don't want to be argumentative, been on the planning board a little while, but when we've talked about spot zoning and being able to look at the city and identify areas that maybe we could relieve some of the spot zoning and do some zoning, there's always been talk about workload, which I understand, you're very busy, but that's why I asked the question.
Does the career professional planner wish to answer the question?
It's been a long day.
Understood, understood. I got defensive for Laval there, sorry about that.
Thank you.
That's why you have us, you know, it's all in the loop.
We are trying to find the right balance between how extensive is this project and what is within our, our workload that we have. I think what you'll see is there are shifts in, we already have standards that are applicable in many places, so this is shifting it from reviewing in those standards to a standard that is comprehensive along an entire corridor. So I don't see that there being, you know, a massive upload in the work, the work and the staffing needs. I think that the design review is a shift also away from the past process of if you're varying from something, it would go through a BOA, and this is going to be using our staff and the DRB. There is more with looking at the design review guidelines, but our plan and hope is that it's all within our capacity. We currently have, and then looking at the volunteers' efforts of the, of a design review board. So, we're, we think we're finding the sweet spot for it.
Is there, is there a sense of the point at which it would, a design review would kick to a board as opposed to staff? Is that kind of been, is that, have those lines been drawn yet, or is it still in process?
Not in a precise way. We've been doing a lot of talking about that. I think the general approach that we've been discussing is that, to the extent feasible, staff would be able to review projects in that design review process.
Laval?
Just one other point that Nori reminded me of, is that another component of kind of finding the right calibration is, is using the threshold concept of when something would be triggered for a design review. And that's part of the reason why we have an 8,000 level and a 15 and a 30.
And I didn't want to, I didn't, I'm not opposed to it, I just was curious about implementation.
Jamie then?
I had a discussion with a fellow architects at the public meeting before I came over here, and we both concluded that we'd be quite concerned about matters being adjudicated before a design review board that didn't have people on it with the experience and training in design, which caused us both to think that the safe path would be to have staff do the review. So, enough said about that. So if you do decide to have a design, a board, non-staff entity doing the reviews, there's got to be some kind of control over the population of people who volunteer for those boards.
Yeah, and I mean, my understanding, I mean, I've met the existing board members, but that to run a system like this, that board, they need to be reshuffled or reorganized, and it's generally a requirement that somebody on a board like that would have a background in real estate, architecture, landscape architecture, et cetera, and experienced with development.
Yes. Another issue comes to mind, I'm a downtown property owner. A question was asked by a fellow architect with regard to the downtown and proposed building heights would seem to conflict with existing chapter, or Title 20, existing building height restrictions. And there was never really a response to his question or issue, so do you have one now?
I do, and I spoke to him at the end of the, at the end of the night as well. The absolute height that you can do under base zoning is not proposed to be changed at all by anyone. So if you can do 125 feet tall building, after this gets implemented, you can still do that 125 feet building now. There was input from the community indicating that the height at the street level, right adjacent to the street, within, let's say, 20 feet of the street adjacent property line, would be ideally at a lower scale that was more in fitting with the scale of traditional development, which is what that six-story scale is. So, does it mean a lower scale for some of the building mass closer to the street? Yes, that's what's being proposed. Overall, height stays in that.
I'll probably submit a comment that will, that will express my concern with that because, you know, the Millennium Building, I think, is 10 stories, and we're the biggest city in the Northern Rockies, and we should be constrained by having maximum six stories at the street level? Like, is that really? I don't really think that that's appropriate downtown. And can you tell the difference if you're standing next to a six-story building, does distinguish from a 10-story building? Is there really that much difference?
If you're standing right under it, you'd probably have a hard time telling the difference. If you're right outside the door, I think if you're down the street or across the street, I think you might build. You know, that's a fair comment. I think the idea in downtown, which is a little bit different than the corridors, but in downtown, this idea of compatibility with traditional character and scale is something we heard over and over again was important, so that's why it ended up making it in there. But I appreciate the comment for sure.
Helen, then Neva?
Yeah, this is slightly off topic, but it's actually a question for Laval. Laval, I saw in the City Digest at the end of last week, a notice about how the university district was rethinking the way that they were going to allow buildings, residential buildings, and how those, apparently the neighborhood's very upset that people are overbuilding on their lots and eliminating the park-like nature of the university district, and that there would be community meetings and discussion on kind of limiting what that would look like. And the reason I bring it up is because I'm curious to know if other residential neighborhoods have certain design excellence guidelines, or will have guidelines that could feed into this, or vice versa.
I don't believe that other, there are some neighborhood character overlays in different places, I should say that. South Side Riverfront is one. So it, all the neighborhoods have the ability to work together to make a case for why they should be looking at an overlay that would be a neighborhood character-based overlay. There's parameters that are set up in the zoning code for doing that, and then you need... need to bring that to city council to get city council support for it. So, there's some standard, there's criteria, there's parameters that are in the code right now. In the case of the university compatibility project that is up for agency and public comment right now, that came about through a lot of work by the city council person who was being responsive to concerns that were raised, and then embarked on a process of talking and working with the, with a subcommittee that was formed. I mean, they, they went through months and months of looking at questionnaires, you know, just really sort of strategically looking at what is the problem here, what are we trying to solve, how do we not go further, not go last, you know, find the right elements to address just those things. And that's what I think is, is coming forward out of that process. It went from that council person and that process back to council a couple of times, to the point where the last time it was there, they agreed to have it move into actual code writing and a proposal for a draft ordinance that is out and will be coming to you guys. So, that was sort of a, a vote that came out of council to do that. Other residential, you know, a year and a half ago, I think, we had that summary report that was done from a workshop quite a while ago that Winter and Company helped us with when we talked about character in the community overall, and there were components that were addressed. And corridors, commercial corridors was one, downtown was another, I think neighborhoods or residential neighborhoods was another one, and then there's some others that we could have tackled. When this all came to council, as that report from the workshop, they chose to stay with the corridors and the downtown as being like the most emergent need and the thing to address. I don't know where that goes with future character projects, I think we just have to wait and see.
Neva?
Okay, thank you. Thanks for coming tonight, and not only for your presentation, but for this great work. It's really important that, I think, that we're asking these questions and trying to find strategies for, around design, and, and yet, I, the only thing I kind of can't visualize with your presentation yet is exactly how these guidelines might make a difference in one's experience of, say, the Brooks Street corridor, if I can use that as an example. I live near there, I, I walk over there, it's not that pleasant to walk, there's a lot of pavement. And so, I'm wondering, you know, that, maybe you don't know this area, but the, the CVS store that was recently moved, that on Kensington and Brooks, that parking lot, like, if these designs, guidelines had been in place, would, would their revamp look any different than it does right now? Because basically, it's, you know, there's barely, there's no new trees, what would it, how would it look different if that, these were in place today? Do, do you follow me?
I, I do, I don't know the project.
Yeah, and I, I just, well, and I, maybe it just, I, I hope it's okay to make a specific example.
So, Brooks Street, corridor typology one, we're talking about more pedestrian activity. We're talking about a build-to line where the setback range is something like five to 10 feet, so some portion, percentage of the building has to be up closer to the street, and a percentage of that wall in this range of five to 10 feet. Talking about placement of parking to the rear. Now, this, that example is a corner, so, you know, we need to work out those details. The idea of the added, the setback zone and building alignment, and building would also have to be, percentage of it parallel to the street, but the idea of that setback area might also be the place that gets enhanced landscape or, or streetscape treatment. So, that's a piece that gets carried forward through design review. And the design review call-out for building, the, the different ways that you can treat that front set, setback, what, what happens in that area. There's a percentage of materials that would be a requirement. Not recalling entry, where that sits, if it's in the guideline or...
There's a lot of stuff about that. Again, not knowing the project, I'll just, a lot of the things Laval is talking about are, are, are in the, are in the overlay standards, the prescriptive standards, not just the guidelines that would be required of what, whether that project has to go to design review or not. And so, like the transparency requirements or the site requirements, the build-to zone she's mentioning, when you get into the guidelines, there's a lot more coverage, and they would cover, if it's in our purple stripe, it would certainly be covered by design review, and it talks about the design, if it's entry, to make it recognizable, how the building is oriented relative to the street and the public ground, how that area, as Laval mentioned, if the building is set back a little bit, different options for how that area could be treated, provided that it does provide a street-level interest and a pedestrian-friendly edge, so hopefully, when you're walking by it next time, or when the next building comes along, it will be a little more pleasant.
This, this project doesn't change any of the prescriptive standards, it's only about the guidelines.
No, no, it doesn't.
So, it changes the prescriptive standards to be...
It does.
So, they would, so those would be different now in that project, on the, it would look quite different than it would be today.
Well, I, if I could jump in, so, this, if, we're talking about Holiday Village, the city has been working for many, many years to encourage the out-of-state owner to redevelop that site. It's in an urban renewal district, so there's been a lot of discussions with MRA about how the MRA could contribute to that. Ultimately, the property owner, as you know, decided not to redevelop the site, just to essentially re-clad the existing building and construct the CVS. So, that's the, it's a good question, because that's the constraint here. I mean, really, for the most part, we're talking about re, new development and redevelopment is where this is really gonna make a difference. So, situations like Holiday Village, we just have to do the best that we can, and we are about to install sidewalks all along the frontage, and the building that is right there on Brooks, a portion of that will be demolished. So, the city is making, I think, significant strides there, but it shows you the constraints that you deal with when you have a private property owner, and you have to work with them to the extent they're willing to do that.
But generally, in the future, if you had new development along which corridor, I hear you guys saying that it would be wanting, if it would become closer to the road, with the parking behind the back, maybe it's a more, more of a walking down, instead of walking down the highway.
It would be the opposite of what you see there today, I, I think I can safely say.
Helen?
Yeah, I just had a, a quick question about bridges. Does design excellence cover bridges?
This, this project is focused on private development, so kind of that public realm stuff, like street design within the right-of-way or bridges and things like that, it does not address.
Okay, thank you.
Pierre?
Can you tell us a little about incentives or disincentives for building in, well, downtown and corridor type one typology? I guess what I'm asking is if somebody comes in to build in, in one of these areas, what incentives do they have to build there rather than somewhere else?
Well, one is that this system would provide flexibility to the applicant in the design of their project in a way that zoning and other mechanisms outside of the coverage of this overlay would not afford. So, particularly if you're looking to do a larger or more complex project where you may need that flexibility or desire that flexibility, that would be built into this system. So, I think that is, that's an incentive. Now, we are still working on some things related to this, but there are certain, there are some items where, certain design variables where the overlay standards actually are a little bit more flexible than even what the base is. So, we're looking at that even more closely, like, for example, Brooks Street, your example, is there extension of the existing parking reduction opportunities that could be built into this overlay, since that is a transit supportive, you know, there's a transit supportive corridor vision for that, for that street and the development that's adjacent to it? So, those are some other things we're looking at. Well, yeah, I mean, the MRA funding is that, you know, if you're receiving MRA funding, that, you know, that is an incentive to comply with design, the design guidelines, for sure.
Mine was, it's a little terrible, so...
Yeah?
There's no questions. Any?
I guess I'm a little, it seems like it's largely a duplication of what could be done through zoning to me. It's a little, to me, it just comes at another cost, another level, adds dollars, adds time, adds staff. We hear that the staff doesn't have the resources or things, we hear things, almost talk about split zoning or being more comprehensive and updating zoning, and I guess I'm a little confused in that movement to implement a new tool, and a new, another toolbox to impose on yet another project, kind of, that's my two cents, so. I mean, I appreciate your efforts, I think you've done a good job of that, but I would not be supportive of it myself, so.
Any comments? Vince?
I'm gonna ask a question similar to Neva's. So, I've had the unfortunate experience, which some of you might have had as well, of having to walk through the drive-through bank, at Interstate Bank, to get money, because there's no, well, there is a, I've never actually used it, but I think there's an ATM inside the building, but they're not, the door isn't open all the time when the building isn't I noticed in the new Stockman Bank building as well, not too far away, also in the inner downtown core, it seems like the entire first floor of the parking garage is drive-through based as well. There's two accesses onto Orange Street, one that's ridiculously close to the intersection. I don't know how that functions during daytime traffic, but anyway, would, would this project affect drive-throughs in the downtown inner core or anywhere of the other zones?
Yeah, it would actually include in the site design section, both downtown and the corridors. Now, there may be some other restriction on drive-through facilities in downtown as well, I'm not exactly sure on that one, but in any case, yes, they address drive-throughs and the location of those drive-throughs related to this, you know, relative to the street and the public ground and things like that for both context corridors and downtown. How you could, how you could incorporate one in a more sensitive way for, right?
Helen?
Yeah, I, I appreciate it's getting late, so I'll be brief. I am interested in aggressively pursuing underground parking in Missoula, and that has, up until this point, been almost nonexistent. And possibly, this is something I need to bring up with MRA, but I would encourage design excellence to really promote underground parking. I mean, when Neva talks about walking on Brooks, it's not just because Brooks is busy that it feels like a highway, it's because it's basically a high, a street of parking lots. And I just, you know, I think, I think when we think about design standards at, at any level, we really need to be thinking about the future, and the future of the world is less cars. And so, you know, we need to start thinking about how we are going to accommodate that. So, yeah, that would be my comment.
Any other comments? Okay. Well, guys, thanks so much for your time. Laval, appreciate your expertise always, and we'll see you in September, it sounds like?
That's the target.
All right, excellent. Oh, okay, we've got, we've got one more question from Helen for Laval.
Sorry, this is in for the Winter and Company team, but Laval, this is totally off, off topic a little bit, but I'm curious to know what is included in the downtown master plan related to usage of space in the downtown. And the reason I bring it up is because I'm really alarmed at the amount of real estate offices that have started to pop up in downtown, and I remember reading a quote, something like, "Nothing kills the charm of a downtown faster than real estate offices." And so, I'm, I'm really alarmed by this, and I don't know if there's anything that we can do about that, as far as like usage of downtown spaces, but can you speak to that?
So, the downtown master plan is a guide, and there's, there, there are some follow-up ideas that were, that are, I can't recall what the document is called, but like in a regulatory recommendations kind of component that speaks to ideas of limiting or permitting only retail use on certain stretches of the downtown area, downtown corridors. And that hasn't been pushed through or moved through to be implemented. It's a, it's a pretty big deal to talk to the community and the neighborhood in that area related to limiting uses in certain places. However, I would say that we're about due for doing, looking at an update to the master plan, so I think that there, if there is more conversation about use and, and how to guide it more specifically, that it can come out of the update, an update to the master plan. So, I think that's where we would, you could guide that. I, I think there's hope to be able to start looking at it, you know, by the end of this year or suit before that, so. It has been around for a while already, yeah.
Okay, thanks again. Appreciate your time. Okay, item number eight, committee reports. We were double-attended at the Urban Growth Commission. Jamie and I both, I forgot that we had, that Jamie had volunteered to be on the Urban Growth Commission. I got an email from Pat O'Hara saying what time the meeting was, so I just said, "Oh, okay," and I went, and Jamie was there, and we realized we was double-booked here, so he let me sit on the commission one time, just to feel the power, and so, I appreciate that. Well, you know, it was, it was something. The, the commission determined how many meetings they were going to have per year, so I felt like that was a real kind of important community conversation. And then Andrew Hagemeier gave a presentation about the update to the land use map, so that's something we've already seen. So, really, nothing new came out of the Urban Growth Commission, I would say. It looks like they're gonna meet twice a year, next meeting's in October, and I will not be there. So, any other committee reports?
Design, that's a question, maybe we're not here.
Okay. Cancel.
It's my report.
Okay, old business, new business?
How's the move that reservation?
It's been forwarded on, and I saw John DiBari at the Urban Growth Commission, and we need a set of time for me to go over there and chat with them, or if there's, if multiple folks from the board want to go chat with the Land Use and Planning Committee, but what I'll, what I'll, need to send John an email, just get that scheduled up and go over and talk with them, so I think that would be the...
We're going to go.
Okay. Yeah.
So, we just need to know when that happens every year.
Okay, perfect. Is there anybody else that's sitting here right now has an interest in going?
Everyone.
Okay, well, then, you know what, I'll talk to John. When he gets a date that we can go, I'll send it out to everybody, and then whoever wants to go, we should just, we can all go, you know, what the heck, bombard them. Okay, new business and referrals? Okay, new business and referrals? None, comments from planning board members?
I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
So, if anybody doesn't like ever, I should probably, we need to encourage people to change their plans. I had a client in a headroom, he said, "Okay, hey, I'm going to have a restaurant, you want to see a bunch of people?" And, you know, I'm thinking, they've got nothing but, we think, I just think we should encourage people to recognize businesses that we need to do.
In a defensive Verizon, it's a cellular plus store.
When they bring it up, encourage, change your plans, somebody else.
These are your cut and done, although I will say this, I have several, there's not a lot of them on there, so I will say this, that's not right with the location, and in fact, their location on Reserve is much more attached than the one on Broadway.
That's not a Verizon store on Broadway. It's a cellular plus store. No, no, seriously, because cellular plus has a store on Reserve Street that's equally as ugly as the one on Broadway, and they just, they need to fire their design team and just start from scratch, because you're right, the Verizon store looks pretty good, I mean, relatively.
It's, you know, it's as charming as a, why is it so...
Any other comments? Are we good? Okay, we're going to adjourn, thanks, everybody.